...of Pierceville, New York City. We held today Tuesday, January 8th. Time is 7:00 PM. May I have a roll call, please?
Mary Yar.
President.
Laura Villar. Richard Gunder. Sonia Hernandez. Here. Brenda Trevino.
Here.
Uliana Hernandez.
Here.
Ben Nisco.
Here.
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 We have a call, so please let us stand. Our location as well as our political opinions. Mr. Medrano. Can you lead us in prayer, please?
My father would thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for coming with us. The members and the votes of officials, staff, over your very blessing over this meeting tonight. Be able to be done in praise of Jesus' name.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did I sign up for this? Do you have Mr. Richard D. Dabbat?
Yes. Yes, I had a concern the other day. A minute ago, we saw a city employee driving the nine lift, the aerial lift. And they were driving in the street, which is not a problem, but he was up on it when they're driving and boxing around. And when you drive it, you're supposed to have a safety harness. So in case they fall off or something, you know. And I stopped him and I asked him, I said, "Where's the safety harness?" He goes, "We don't have it." I said, "If you just don't, didn't put it on or you don't have it." He goes, "No, no, we don't have them at all." And to me, that raises the concern because if something were to happen to him, the city's liable. And even though people say, "Well, it's not regulated under OSHA, but it is under every manual that mandate that requires that, as part of the safety for that machine." And so I came here, I'm fairly new in town. I mean, I've been here for years, but I don't know what office it was. I went to the judge and asked him, he told me this was the office. And then I asked for the city manager and they said I had to make an appointment. I said, "Well, I mean, it's an issue that I'm trying to help file." And then I have to wait and make an appointment. So I figured I'd just come and bring it to you all at the same time. You know, and people say, "Well, it's no big deal." I think that is. Because if something happens to him, it's a lawsuit. Where does it want to come out? It comes from the city. And for something that cost me $100 that to me is required for the safety, I think it is an issue. And, you know, that's why I'm here for that particular reason.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Maybe the manager might say, "Well, it's not a good deal." But, you know, I think we're supposed to follow, try to take care of all employees or any human being, you know, where they will be.
Thank you.
Okay.
Item 5, action to consent agendas discussion possible regarding approval of minutes from November 13 through December the 11 through the 18. This is an action item. Entertain a motion to discuss, please.
Motion to discuss? Check it.
In favor?
Aye.
Any questions or comment on the agendas?
One or two more.
Entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the minutes from November 13 through November 18 through December the 11, 2015.
You have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor? I show hands, please. Motion to discuss. Okay, moving on to item 6, new business. Discussing, city ordinance number 2019-01-01 to order a general election from May 4, 2019 for the purpose of electing a mayor and three city council members, place 5, 6, and 7, pursuant to the Home Rule Charter, ordering the appointment of early voting ballot board and setting the rate of pay for election officials. Entertain a motion to discuss, please.
Motion to discuss.
You have a second. All in favor? I show hands, please. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Council ordinance 2019-01-01 is the standard ordinance to call for the annual election for the city of Pierceville. This one, obviously, as the mayor stated, is to call for the election on Saturday, May 4 of 2019 for the mayor's position and council members in place 5, 6, and 7. If you have any questions, I'll crystal everything else you want to add in.
Yes, I'm so sorry. When I drafted the ordinance itself, I went ahead and I reduced the pay rate, I believe, by a dollar for the election judge and I believe the election clerks are so safe. However, on exhibit 8, I accidentally left Mr. Jesus Cuéllas and Grace Perez in there. I've already reached out to a couple of individuals who would like to take over elections this year. There's one that's really knowledgeable. She's, it's tentative with her right now, this moment. So, but I have three individuals right now that I'm looking at to fill that spot for this year. I sent Mr. Cuéllas.
I have a question. We discussed, or it was discussed here, maybe that this kind of interaction would be done a little differently? Is this what we're talking about? Is there going to be, is it going to be outsourced or what's?
Well, that's one of the options we have to set the rate before we can talk to somebody from outside. Before we have to call and set the rate and then we can start talking to people about coming in.
So we shouldn't have names in here yet?
No, that's what she said, they should have.
On the ordinance that I have that I corrected, I revised it today, I saw it. I, it's blank, it's totally blank. If you look on Board Book, that last attachment, it said A, it's like, but if Uliana will be the only one to save the paper packet, his will have Jesus Cuéllas and Grace Perez in it. That was from last year. So I messed up on this, I'll let it down.
So it's $17 now or $18?
I reduced it, yes. If it's a $17, there it's not $16.
Any other questions?
Yes, I have one more. So is the city still in charge of the election?
Yes. Election judge would be $17 per hour. And election clerks will be $11 an hour. The election judge will be $30 an hour. So each one's reduced by a dollar.
Could we not budget a true to have outside help on this? I thought we had a budget.
There are certain guidelines that we do follow. They do have to be registered here. It's just we're trying to change it from the usual person that we do have because we received several complaints about him last year. So I'm trying to look for somebody else other than him and a new team because he has the same group of people that he has every single year. So new individual, new team, election clerks, counters, anything and everything that goes on election day.
So what do we budget for in the last year's budget?
And this year, early voting, we're going to try to get two more people rather than it be two people outside because when we do curbside voting, by law, you have to have two individuals, which leaves only one person in here to work the early voting booth. So we're going to go ahead and we're going to try to get one or two individuals also for early voting to help out with curbside and additional help inside whenever we do do curbside voting. So there'll be more eyes on everything.
So would you say also, would you be talking to people outside of Pierceville?
Yeah, I thought we were going to give.
Well, that was one thing to talk about. By law, you can't, it has to be somebody registered.
It's got to be registered. Right, right, right.
When it's talked about during the budget, there was a discussion about probably how explicit it is.
Yes, because I spoke with Secretary of State because there were several complaints about the individual. And I didn't know if you guys could file complaints or anything like that on that individual. They had said, "No, we wouldn't be able to do it." So they said the best bet would be if it was, if we were uncomfortable with using that same individual, we're going to have to just look elsewhere with different team.
So how much was budgeted for? That was different from last year?
Last year it was $19,000.
Last year it was $17?
Yeah, we increased it by two, just in case we figure that, but it's not the case.
Is that in writing?
It's in the filings filed.
The extra was primarily because if we had been able to go outside and get someone, we're going to pay for hotels and meals. And then adding the extra curbside people, that's probably still going to come pretty close to that.
Is that in writing somewhere that they can't use them? Or it was just a word about?
To not use Mr. Cuéllas? We just received several complaints from individuals that they didn't feel comfortable with the way he managed election day. No one put it in writing from our end.
The money is just going to be used to streamline the process?
Well, it gets more eyes on the process too. Like if we bring an extra people outside and, you know, we'll look at everybody that wants to be the judge for that, you know, be the election judge and then she'll have to pick the best ones. That's, of course, if you have one who have complaints about them, that's probably not going to be the best one for the process.
Madam Mayor, has there been other complaints in past elections or is this kind of new this cycle?
No, from what I understand, it was this past election on election day that there was a big issue with certain mail-in ballots being dropped off, incidents that happened within the 100-foot area, the radius of election area happening, that he didn't do anything about it. So there was just a certain complaints that were given to me, but I myself cannot do anything because he takes care, he took care of election day. That's his area. So it would be up to the complainant to actually file a complaint with Secretary of State, which from what I understand, nothing was done, so.
We're just doing this as a precaution, we're not mandated.
So the tryst in new election judge, one that's chosen, one that is chosen?
Well, what we do is we usually just go out and kind of fish for people that we know have knowledge in elections that we've been every year, year for year, whether for the school or for us. So it's pretty much what we're going after. And they've ever received complaints or anything like that.
Any other questions? If not, we entertain a motion to address ordinance number 2019-01-01. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? I show hands. Motion carries in essence.
Are you in there?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. All righty, moving on to 6C. Discussion and possible action regarding resolution number 2019-01-01. What in the city's depository bank bid and authorizing the city manager to execute the depository agreement? Entertain a motion to discuss, please. Motion to discuss.
Second.
All in favor? Yes, sir.
Madam Mayor, Council Resolution 2019-01-01. Previously, the council had approved the RFP process for the bank depository required by law. They went through it based on a period of time that we've done. Previously, we've done those for one year at a time. And so every January, December, January, we're going to have to go through this process again. So the council agreed to do a five-year RFP this time, which we did. We only had one response to the RFP, it was from Security State Bank. You have a copy of that response in your package. The response met all of our requirements, so we've recommended you approve Security State Bank. We approved the resolution 2019-01-01, making Security State Bank our bank.
Question?
No, I'm moving to approve resolution number 2019-01-01.
Second. All in favor? I show hands.
Madam Mayor, I'm going to abstain my life as an officer there.
Okay. Motion carries in essence. All righty. Discussion and possible action regarding Pierceville Main Street facade improvement match grant. Action item? Entertain a motion to discuss, please.
Motion to discuss.
All in favor?
Madam Mayor, Council, one of the items that the council approved in this year's annual budget was a line item for a downtown facade improvement grant program. The council placed $20,000 in that line item. Do you, your actually started out with a little bit more than that, that was one of the cuts that we made as we were trying to balance the budget. In your package, you have a proposed set of guidelines and application. Guidelines for kind of a culmination of looking at 10, 15, 16. I think there's a copy in the package, she's going to give you a copy of it, another copy of it right now so you can look at it. Most of the cities, almost all the cities that are part of the main street program, of course, have this matching grant program. So we looked at a bunch of their applications, their guidelines, their application, tried to take what was really good out of theirs and use it and get rid of the stuff that was kind of burdensome for the city of Pierceville. Notice in the details, it provides for a maximum of $5,000 per grant as the match for the city, which would mean they would have to have a $10,000 minimum project on their building. It can be used for repairing brick and mortar, replacing windows, removing brick, anything that restores it to its original historic condition or for doing signage, new signage on the buildings. The signage grant is a lower value grant. It doesn't allow them to work on the interior of the building, doesn't allow them to work on the roof. It's related to the front, the facade, the front park mix in the street that everybody can see. There's a number of stipulations in here that they have to meet. The process would be that they would apply, they would sit down with the Main Street Director, go through, make sure that their project looks like it meets the requirements. But they would have to sit down with the Main Street Board and make sure that it meets the federal standards and then once it's met the federal standards, through the Main Street Board, if they recommend approval, then it would come through City Hall for you guys to have a final approval on the project. It doesn't have to be, they could be a $1,200 project with a $600 matching, whatever they come up with on that project would be it. So it doesn't have to be the full amount, there could be a lot that we can do with this program. There's also another requirement on the end of, that if they do get a grant and they complete the program, the project, if they make any changes to it within a year, then they have to reimburse the city for the match that the city gave you on that grant. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to try to answer your questions. We're about, or we're already a quarter of the way to the budget here, so we wanted to get this on the agenda, get it started because we did have it as part of this year's, part of this year's budget. So the people, if there were people out there that are interested in making some improvements, they can get started on making improvements. But only apply in the Main Street issue for this grant. If you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer your questions.
Do we, is there a gross amount, is this, the 50% is funded by us?
Right, so they're applying to the grant, they would tell us how much their project, they think their projects will cost, the final approval would be the council saying, "Yeah, if your project's going to cost $7,000, we agree that once you complete it, if it costs $7,000, we'll reimburse $3,500." No money upfront, they have to complete the project, come in, show us what they did, show us all the receipts, show us everything that they did, and then we'll reimburse based on that. So it's not money upfront, it's money afterwards.
And what, how much are we going to allow?
The maximum of $5,000.
But I mean gross, like?
We have $20,000 in the book.
Is this for buildings that are vacant or just existing businesses?
Well, it would be for any building, by the way, it would be for any building on Main Street to approve the facade. But the grant specifically says that before they can get the grant, city staff has to ensure that they meet code. So if it's a vacant building with a roof out of it, they don't meet the code, so they can't, they're not eligible.
They also have to establish permits?
Oh, they have to, they have to have their CMO in place, they would have to get permits to do it. It's all in here that they have to meet all the city code requirements to be eligible for the grant.
Are there any restrictions on how many times one business could get the grant? I didn't see it in here, but.
No, there's no restrictions. So I guess if they apply this year and they apply next year for a different, you know, I guess that would probably be okay. There's no restrictions in there. What it does say though is if there's a business owner that owns multiple buildings and they have multiple projects, those projects will be combined into a single. So if you have one building, but they have three businesses in that one building and they try to do three different grants for the front of that building, it'll be combined into one grant. So they can't get three different grants for one building.
It would still be a max of $5,000 for all three?
Yes.
So is it, I have a question. Is it in here that, for instance, a wife has a business, is she ineligible because I'm on the council? Is that in there?
No. No, again, it specifically says in here that it doesn't have to be the building owner to apply for the grant. It could be if there's a, if somebody's renting a building and they want to do the work, they're eligible to apply for it too. So you would have to abstain from the vote on her grant, otherwise she would not be ineligible to apply for the grant. Any business owner on Main Street can apply for a grant. You just wouldn't be able to vote on that.
I think it also needs to stipulate, say, Rinsen, they do the work in one month and turn around, they do another project in another month, the same business.
One per year. They said one per year. But they'll say that, yes.
Okay. Awesome.
Is there anything in there on maintenance, once it's done?
Oh, no, there's nothing on maintenance once it's done, though.
Can we require anything like, let's make sure you keep it up at least for three years or something?
The only thing after it's completed that's in there is that if they change it within a year, that they have to reimburse. We could add, if you want, say that they change it or don't, if they change it within a year, they have to reimburse. If they don't maintain it within three years, staff reimburses. I would just, the approval with that stipulation, that's like, we'll have that in our department.
Something like that, so we can make sure that it continues.
Stay on stipulation. We need to entertain a motion to address resolution number 2019-01-01. No, no, I'm sorry. Entertain a motion to address this.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion on item 6C that we approve the Pierceville Main Street facade improvement, that is right?
Guidelines and application?
Yes.
Adding in?
Adding in.
Three-year, five-year?
Three-year. Three-year.
Three-year maintenance.
There's a motion, if anyone may have a second? All in favor? Motion carries in essence. All righty, 16. Discussion and possible action regarding wastewater treatment plant UV system replacement for 2016 certificate of combination grant. This is an action item we entertain in relation to discuss, please. Motion to discuss.
Second.
All in favor?
Madam Mayor, Council, the last blog workshop that we had, one done, it was approved by the council, was to move forward with the wastewater treatment plant UV rebuild project. So the bids were posted for that project. In the package that you have, the recommendation package that you have, you'll see that there were three contractors that bid on the project. We had estimated that it was probably going to be about $400,000, it cost somewhere around there. We did have one that came in below that at about $364,000. And so that's the one that we're recommending that the bid be awarded to. It's TTE LLC out of Swishtoad, Texas, with a total base bid amount of $364,000. And that's the last big project we have, this one here.
Good question. Yes.
This is the, where we replace those lights that, kind of the last stage of cleaning the water?
The final treatment step on the water for current use.
And that is, we weren't quite up to code, but this brings us up to code, is that right?
Absolutely. If you guys remember, Mr. Gunder, after he came to one of the meetings, he was talking to you about the fact that our system that we have is sold, that we're having problems finding parts for it. And he's kind of having a huge problem with keeping the water, keep nothing going. So, yeah, this is the final step in that. It'll get us into CEQ compliance with our treatment. And it'll be a system that's updated that we can actually get parts for.
And this is, we had budgeted $400,000?
So this is relatively budgeted.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we award the wastewater treatment plant UV system replacement as requested by, or as recommended by LNB to TTE LLC for $364,000.
Motion table, may I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? I show hands. Motion carries in essence. Discussion and consider a resolution number 2019-04 approving service provider agreement between Trail County Emergency Services District Number 1 and the city of Pierceville for the provision of emergency protection and other services. Action item, entertain a motion to discuss, please.
Motion to discuss.
May I have a second? Sorry. All in favor? I show hands. Motion carries in essence. Yes, sir.
Madam Mayor, Council, resolution 2018-1204, as you heard in the December meeting, we had this on there. We didn't have a copy of the service provider agreement. So now we have a copy of the agreement, standard resolution, standard agreement. So we have to do every year to get our money from the emergency service district, so we recommend it.
What was that?
We have to prove this every year or we don't get our money out of the emergency service district. This is the one that provides this $100,000 we have in the budget, or $100,000 for every budget.
For the?
For the fire departments, that's the only, yes, they reimburse the money from the emergency service district.
And that is more than agreement than it has been?
It always has been, yes.
Has been?
You guys remember last year, year four, year four?
Is it ever up for discussion?
It could be up for discussion.
Are there any tickets?
That's a good question. You know, this is, this is a big kind of area partner, I think, for all because of the way the SD was set up and that wasn't really our, we didn't have a lot of duty with the way the SD was set up. Our service provides a lot more service than what's in it, we all agree first equal, same amount in that issue. I think if we want to, if we want to have those discussions about the proportionality of the one that goes out, that's probably something we need to start now for next year because it's going to be a long discussion. There are going to be a lot of people that are going to be opposed to Pierceville.
I think if we have statistical data to support the argument.
65%.
That's my opinion.
65% of people that are paid into it are getting a quarter of that. So I like, or kind of like the evidence.
It's just that we, you know, we are in need of equipment and trucks and so we don't even have a lighter truck.
Some of the departments that give people to share have all kinds of equipment because they don't have to drain on the resources that we have on a daily basis because they don't have the type of costs that we have, they don't have the amount of costs that we have. I think as the conversation's more started, I think we need to approve this, we get our money this year and then start it for.
If we need to approve it, then start conversations. Madam Mayor, who are the principals that make up the service district?
The city of Pierceville, the city of Dilly, more Bigfoot, more fire departments as well. So it's a county getting money out of that? Both the counties? I think the county. No, it's four.
It's four.
Yes, four. So it's us, Dilly, Bigfoot, and more. Those four, those four fire departments are the ones that get paid out. And there's, you know, there's a lot of interesting components to this because an emergency service district for fire is eligible to charge up to, it's just like 10 cents is their maximum level. And this one was set up, it was set up under the framework, it never go above 3 cents. And so that's why it's three, it's a 3 cents tax per hundred that's charged for the emergency service district here. So as the county gets bigger, as the cities get bigger, as there's more homes and more everything, there's no expansion in the revenue for it either. It's the same amount now it was when it was set up. It was originally. It was originally, I think it was like in the late nineties, early two thousands, late eighties, early nineties, somewhere in there, they used to have what they called fire districts that was originally set up as a fire district. Then when they created the emergency service districts, it rolled over into an emergency service district without limitation. And it's not really a true emergency service district, it's, it's what's allowed under state law. We had talked at one time, you guys have been here for a while, remember, when we were talking about, we were talking about the ambulance service, about the possibility of splitting out from the S D and doing our own E S D inside city to, for ambulance and fire protection as well, because there was such a limitation on, on the amount that came in under that. But it's, it's, it's a pretty difficult process. I mean, it's, it would take, it would take a little bit to get, for there to be a fundamental change in the emergency service district, I think it requires you call the county taxpayers as well. That's part of what we'll have to figure out in the discussion, is what it would actually take to get that, that reestablished where it was proportional.
And so it would be all those entities that would come to the table?
They're all the ones that have, that have, that have a say in the emergency service.
And each entity has a twenty-five percent say, that's all?
Basically, yeah. So if you got two little bit of departments out there, and more in Bigfoot that have half of the say, it's going to be pretty hard to get, to get anything changed.
But isn't the E S D board directors, how are they elected?
I don't know.
They're appointed.
They're, they're appointed by the county.
I used to be on it years ago.
They're appointed by the county?
Yeah. This county was all great.
Is that what Mr. Calios is on? Is he the?
No, he's the emergency service director.
Okay.
That's a different, that's a different.
Intain a motion, please. Motion to approve Resolution.
Madam Mayor, I'm second.
I'm in favor. Show your hands, please. Motion carries on next. Moving on to item A. Discussion on Possible Action Considering Proposed Facility Rental and Equipment Rent at Tourism and Business Development Center. Action item needed in relation to discuss, please. Motion to discuss.
Second.
You have a second? I'm in favor. Yes, sir.
Madam Mayor, Council, there's a packet in front of you for, it's a proposed facility rental and equipment use application and agreement for the tourism and business development center. As you know, we, we put the desk over there trying to get that training room set up, and get some other things that are actually being used as a, as a meeting facility, or to be used for a training facility, or for a number of other things. And we have the, the room at the library that we rent out to the public and allow for meetings and for other things. We have the civic center, which sometimes is, is far bigger than what people need. So we'll put this together for a proposed rental of the tourism and business development center for the rooms over there that we have that are available for training or for, for meetings for small groups also. Do you want to add anything about it, Cleo, or?
Just note that in the rental rate portion of the application, it lists the fee at twenty dollars an hour, and there is a discount for business members. If you're a member, it's ten dollars an hour. So that on the bottom as well, there's fees for Xerox copies. The library has fees, so they're comparable to that. I put a discount for business members, the incentives, pardon, incentive perk package that you approved, that we have incentives for business memberships. At next council meeting, I will have a more expanded list of incentives for business memberships available that you may just put at that.
Awesome. Questions on the council?
Of course.
Yes, sir.
At the, at the park, there's a certain fee for the use of the lights and sort of more. That's established already. However, the other rentals that we have is electricity, how is electricity taken into consideration?
Well, the civic center's included, I mean, that's part of the rental fee. Anytime we rent a building, we assume the electricity's part of the usage inside there.
Do we have a scale for that, or a schedule as to how we determine that?
Just look at the space, total space, and kind of try to do the rates based on the total space that we have available, or the other resources we have. But the civic center, we don't have a copying machine, but there we have a copying machine. So for a small business training, or a small meeting, it'll, it'll, some kind of probably more advantageous for them to use the tourism and business development center than it would be for them to use civic center. That makes it clean up a lot easier, too. We set this one up, this, this is kind of set up similar to the way it's set up at the civic center. There's a checklist on there, pay a deposit, if you want to return the deposit back, you've got to do all these things. You've got to wipe out everything, clean it up, you know, trying to set it up to, to keep the, our, our extra work at a minimum.
I also added a computer usage rate of five dollars an hour, two fifty, for a business member, letting them come use a computer and then rent out or email to themselves.
What kind of food preparation would be done on site? Is there provisions for that here?
It asks.
Are we equipped for a kit with a kitchen?
No, there's no kitchen. It asks them if they are planning to bring food, what type of food they're bringing, to clarify what it is. You know, they want to bring in food like they do often at the civic center, they're welcome to do that, but we want permission or give them.
It says, do you intend to prepare food on the?
If somebody wants to barbecue outside, I give them the option. I don't know.
So that's prepared.
Have we been enough for meetings over there? Were you prepared on site?
They're not going to expect a kitchen or anything from us.
No cases for that. Most of those meetings over there would probably be sub sandwiches or something that they would be ready to, if they were going to do a lunch meeting over there.
Or heavy baked cake, or they bring in their crop pots and what have you.
All right. All right.
End of the discussion? If not, do we entertain a motion to address item A?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we approve, item M.
Second, please. Second. I'm in favor, like show your hands, please. Motion carries on next. All righty, gee, discussion of possible action established on July twenty nineteen Freo County Day, Texas State Legislature. Action item needed in relation to discuss, please. Motion to discuss. I'm in favor.
Madam Mayor, Council, we've been talking about this, we talked about this through retreat, and then we kind of continued this with the council's approval of the legislative priorities for this year. We received an email from Selena Overbow, I believe is her name. She is the chief of staff for Representative Tracy King, reaching out to us to try to establish what day will be Freo County Day at the legislature. She reads out to all three groups, to us, and to the county, and to the City of Dilly as well. The only guidance that she gave us was that it would have to be on a Tuesday or Wednesday, as early as January fourteenth, preferably no later than February twenty-seventh, when the majority would be available to travel to Austin. It would start, so that they convene, the house convenes at ten AM, the second convenes at eleven AM, and there would be all the other stuff during the day. So it's basically a full day, probably have to go up the night before, and then be there the full day. They're asking us for, to work with the City of Dilly and with Freo County on some proposed dates. So I've, I've heard back from the, the City of Dilly, they said that they would be available on the last two Tuesdays of the month, the twenty-second or the twenty-ninth, but they prefer the twenty-ninth. If, if us and Dilly could agree on a date, then we could take it to the county and hopefully get some agreement on a date where we could get everybody, the majority of the people up there. So basically, what I'm hoping we can get here tonight is a proposed date that aligns with the city, as well the city of Dilly has, has given us as options for them, so that we can start talking to the county, see if we can get this thing set up and get it organized. So again, the City of Dilly said that the last two Tuesdays of the month would work for them, the twenty-second or the twenty-ninth, they prefer the twenty-ninth.
After stop shows, so that would be better.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine.
Everybody's okay with the twenty-ninth?
January?
January.
Is that a Friday?
That's a Tuesday.
Tuesday. Had to be a Tuesday or a Wednesday, nights on Wednesdays were not a good idea for us. And I think they were a good idea for Dilly.
Twenty-nine, motion B.
So I will work with, I will reconnect with the Dilly city manager, I'll make sure I still prefer the twenty-ninth, and then we'll give the county in, and see if we can get that agreement, and get it set up. So if we get it set up, we can ask some information on, on, we'll get an, I'm sure it should be a nineteen or eighteen, once we get a date.
So you put it as an action item, so we still have?
I would suggest that you vote for.
Intain a motion, please.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we establish the legislative visiting date for Freo County as January the twenty-ninth.
Second.
I'm in favor. Motion carries. Item seven, secondary session. Corrosion, text, code, chapter five dot one, section five dot one, nine zero seven five. Eight, discussion regarding cost sharing agreement and clause number eighteen dash nine dash zero three, agreed with I C D F, Stiles, South Texas Electric Corporation, Inc. versus Freo County President District. The discussion of a regarding cost number zero four dash zero six dash zero zero eight one five, C B, providers versus City of Pierceoff litigation. Need to entertain a motion, voting, secondary session. I make a motion.
Second.
I'm in favor. The time is seven forty. All right, we need to entertain a motion to return to the previous session.
So move it up.
I'm in favor. Time is eight twenty-three. Open session, item eight-eight, discussion of possible action to approve Resolution Number Two Zero One Nine Dash Zero One Dash Zero Two, entering cost sharing agreement and clause number one-eight, dash zero nine, zero zero three, four nine, C B F, Stiles, South Texas Electric Corporation, Inc. versus Freo County President District. This is an action item. Intain a motion to discuss, please. Motion to discuss.
Second.
I'm in favor.
Madam Mayor, Council, you have Resolution Twenty Nineteen Four One Oh Two, which is Resolution Authorizing Entering Into the Cost Agreement, which we approved.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Resolution Number Two Zero One Nine Oh One Oh Two, the cost sharing agreement with South Texas Electric versus Freo County President District.
There's a motion as well as a second on the table. I'm in favor, like show your hands, please. Motion carries on next, please. Item eighty, discussion of possible action regarding cost number zero four dash one six dash zero zero eight one five, C B, providers versus City of Pierceoff litigation. Is this an action item? Intain a motion to discuss, or is this no action?
No action to be taken.
No action to be taken on item eighty. All right, moving on to, thank you, guys. Moving on to nine, managers report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Council, first item, Main Street First Friday, January Main Street First Friday, the cell, of course, is past Friday, profit insurance for the whole business of this one. We didn't have quite the chance to hold for it, nor the likely to do the basketball team playing out of town, we had to hold it, whether or not, we will be doing next month, and we're going to be hosting some celebrations on Saturday. And now we'll have a time to share a few of our thoughts.
Hi, Mayor, Council members. Your financial report is providing for you on your, yes. So for the December very first, we're at twenty-five percent of budgets. Our total utility passed due, it's two hundred and forty-eight thousand, three hundred and eighty. Past due of ninety days is one seventy-four, one hundred and seventy-four thousand, nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand. The current debt remains the same. Our capital may be used for the city's, the city's, the city's. We can factor the cost of, the cost of, the, 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 the,
with what we received last year. Sliding higher in October, sliding lower in November, but they were very similar to what we received last year.
I think it's important to, to kind of keep a, you know, just keep things parallel so that we can see where, what is actually going on with the local business.
And, and now that we're getting, now that we're getting phase one, it'll be hard to do that, because they don't, they don't give us, you know, this is what you got from what you got before, and this, you know, now we're just going to get that one. But we'll be able to look at it on a monthly basis, and now we'll see till December, we're seventy thousand above what we were the year before. So in the next month, if we're only thirty thousand above, while something happens across the board, we'll, we'll be able to, to at least try to extrapolate what we're at.
It would be good to have that info just in case, because, I mean, you know, I see little businesses shutting down in some cases, and, you know, I don't, I know, I don't know if any new businesses are coming in or whatever, but I kind of worry sometimes that we're not, like, attracting business like we should.
And we've had, we've had a couple of small ones shut down, we've had a couple, we went on Main Street over the, we got a couple others that are working on trying to open up right now. At the next meeting, we talked, one of the things we talked about at the last meeting was that analysis that the Main Street group in Austin did, Countywide, they talked about the businesses and where we had those gaps, the retail gaps, and we told them we'd ask them to work on one for the city, and they've actually completed the one for the city. We just got it, we're just starting to look at it, but they've actually got some recommendations on some businesses that we need to, to try to, to attract and get to come here, based on our, our region, where there were those businesses located out of the region, and I, I think what they give us is going to give us something that we can go to those businesses and say, hey, look, you know, we're, we're a bigger population than where you are here, we have a larger, a larger base here, you know, you've got your business there, so, you know, you probably need to be looking to come here. And there's four, there's three or four that they recommended that we tried to get, and having that analysis done, to be able to give to those businesses, will be a big help when we talk to them. So that's something we're going to start on, start off this one, is talking to those businesses and see if we can use that analysis as, while those people are off, to try to attract them to come here. Any other questions on the financial report for a moment?
I just wanted to state that, that really is exciting, looking at the expense percentages at, right at twenty percent. Just using that on a, as a, as a, that five percent savings could be as much as a quarter million dollars in, in savings to the city if, if we can maintain that through the year. So, well done, certainly first quarter.
Well, of course, I mean, you have to, you have to keep it all, you know, it's like we, we try to tell everybody, you know, we don't get excited about the fact that we've already collected forty percent of our revenue, because we have front load, and, you know, we still have a lot of payments to make, and there's some big stuff that hasn't come out, but we made some big payments already, too, you know, paying off some of the construction stuff and some of that stuff, so, you know, across the board, across the board, and the departments are, you know, we're at about twenty, twenty-one percent right now, we're at twenty-five percent of it, so the departments have done good, have done good at this point. We can keep it there, it'll sure keep us in good shape at the end of the year.
Well, well, well done. Well, I like to say that it's good, yes, that we're doing that, but let's also remember that we need to not forsake any services or repairs or things that need to get accomplished, because, you know, I know that you're not doing it deliberately, it's just that sometimes it may get overlooked.
Sure, sure, we talk about that all the time. Item number three, the whole senior park renovations update, for those of you that have been by there this week, the interior fence around the skate park and the exterior fencing project around the entire park are being completed. The exterior fencing was finished on Saturday, on Saturday, I believe. I still paint because the mayor and councilman Trevino said they were going to go out there and paint that fence, and we saw the whole job.
Either.
Lighting has been added to the skate park, so we have, by the way, now, we have a big new, huge floodlight that's on the skate park, so it makes it dark over there, that thing is lit up, so we can see what's going on inside of there. And the splash pad is almost complete. Contracted to work in buildings, we need to finish up the splash pad, move on to the installation of the other components of the park. At this point, we appear to be right on track for a, a March, sometime around spring break, grand opening of the main street park. Doing what the council thought we did. The Main Street annual report, or as they call it, the ten-point criteria report, while she's handing those out. The annual report required by the Main Street program was submitted on December twentieth of twenty eighteen. Some, some, some points that I want to make sure that you guys understand while she taps it out. The minimum required score the Main Street City must achieve on that report to receive national accreditation is ninety out of one hundred and seven. We believe that the report for the City of Pierceville Main Street program is going to achieve a score of at least ninety-two out of one oh seven, and that was graded ourselves very strangely. Achieving that national accreditation is the next step in opening the doorway to the C D V G grants for our downtown district, downtown district, district, among other things. Achieving accreditation in the first year of the program is almost unheard of, but is an example of the efforts that are being made by our grant. This time, I want to give her a chance to briefly review that, those reports submitted.
So, I'm just going to kind of go over it quickly. What they basically do is they give you a report that lays down your whole year, and at first, I thought it was going to be crazy to do it, but after it was done, I was really excited. So if you want to go to page four, it's criteria one, and what they basically want you to do is show your support in the community. So I went down, selected, like, local government, education, the chamber, which would be the tourism building, and you have to go in there and break it down and give them an example of how it was shown. So I put the city manager, the council, the different groups, like Clio's always helping me with the tourism, the Main Street, you know, different sponsors throughout the community that are always there, and people are always volunteering. So then, once you write it all down, you also have to go through the newspaper, through the whole year, and pick your articles. I think Main Street had a total of nineteen articles in the paper, which is pretty interesting, since we have only been in the program for nine, what, since February. It wanted to see all the flyers you've made, so if you look on page seven, every flyer you have made or we've been part of is on there. And then, on page eight, we did, I've been doing collages of every event that we have, First Friday, Comfort Street, the welcome sign, tree lighting ceremony, different things that we're doing. I make the collages that you can see the, the different turnouts. So then, on nine, each one, we have the newspaper articles, what Main Street's done, and different things that the newspaper said about us. If you go to criteria two, it wants to know, if we have the vision and mission statement, which we did at the very beginning of Main Street, which was April tenth, that y'all perjured it. So you have to state that you do have that in there. One thing that I do want to do next year is have a core value statement that we don't have right now, it's worth one point, so next year, for sure, I want to have that in there. Criteria three, it wants to know how you balance your board and the activities. So what I had to do is create a working plan, and you break down each category where the Main Street program has a four-point criteria, which is promotion, design, organization, and economic vitality. One of my board members has to be the chairperson to each one, and they help promote that criteria. And so this basically breaks it down and tells you what exactly each board member has to participate in, and how you, how you identify each category in that. So I wrote it down there, and it's the mission, and then the items to state. Criteria four was very interesting to me. I hadn't really realized how much was done, so it's on paper. What you had to do was you do your different projects, ideas, and addresses. So I wrote on here, we did the Main Street trash cans, the Freeo Dollar Store, did their painting of the building, the Main Street banners in our Oak Street, the front porch renovation, tourism building, the front lawn was taken out and made a lot nicer. The Freeo Dollar Store, the Studio A, the restaurant, Pierceville Welcome Sign, lights on Main Street, and the Christmas lighting. So if you go through those pages, it shows before and after, and it'll also show you details. So the first one is the front end floor, the way it looks now with the logo, the Dollar Store. Whenever, I don't know if y'all have noticed, but whenever they, they came to the first lady, and they saw the rendering that that window was, was put in, they did it automatically. They went and they put it in. So that was one of the first things that happened right after the first lady came, so I put that picture in, and then on the inside view, you can see out. And then the welcome signs, we put those in. I want to get, it's a little bit bigger, they're kind of small to see, that's something that's something that everybody's been telling me about, so that'll be something that'll happen this feature. Page twenty, that's the biggest one, the front porch, the way it looks now. It is just, that's going to be a good one for us, because that's, that's really nice.
Can we send them just something that says, "Well done"?
I think we need to do something that has a lot, best volunteer or something, I think we need to do something that, because that's...
What was that? Was that Harvey here? What was that?
Well, they didn't ask for rental.
No, they want to do it, but they want to make sure that, that goes through first.
I've already approached the board, they just want to stabilize.
One of the things they want to do is whenever they do their first Friday, they want to mix them together and do their first Friday and their grand opening. We were going to do it in January, but her daughter had a baby that day, so I'm ready for it. And then, on page twenty-two, it's...
One second.
Okay.
One of the things that we talked about on this council about three years ago, maybe, when she first came on, is that any, any of the businesses downtown or anywhere, really that are keeping up with their brands and so forth, we had discussed at one time, maybe possibly a...
Awarded.
Some kind of, not award, but maybe a, some kind of pride city of Pierceville button or black or something that goes on their wall outside, some kind of identifier that says, "This business is doing what we want them to do here in Pierceville." Because I know that James sends in, and their offices are pretty nice, and there's a lot of businesses that are keeping up. Golden Chick is doing a, a good job of keeping up with their yards.
Those have been car washed, they have car washed down there.
Which, which one? So it's kind of like, you know, to, to promote the pride in, in what we're trying to get accomplished, and...
One of the things with the business memberships, that was one of the things my board brought up, was providing awards, recognition, recognition to local businesses that wouldn't bother behind.
In the South County, they have businesses that...
The Chamber, you know, recognizes business, and they have an annual award ceremony happening.
But they do some kind of, you know, like, they'll have wall plaques on the outside of the building, or that, that distinguishes that business from the rest.
The Main Streets did that a lot, they will give special commission awards and plaques for the businesses to put back outside their building.
And see, on the marketing plan, one of the things in organization was to support downtown preservation and to advocate for downtown and for successes to public. So that's one of the things that I do want to look forward to, is how can you promote that and show them successes, to promote the successes. And then, so then on twenty-two, we took a picture of the lawn in front of the tourism building, to what it was and what it is now. The Freeo Drug Store after the front porch, what they, they retained, and the color scheme was very similar, I think it went off of what they had done, and the inside view is also what it looks like, the details. Studio A is the next one, and I did a lot of her interior, because that's, to me, very interesting the way she did it. She found the sticky wall, like adhesive on the wall, but it's brick, so it looks like real brick inside, but it's, it's not, it's not that inside. It's really interesting, and then she put her own graffiti on the wall, so I really liked the way they did that. And then the welcome sign, before and after, and what it looks, the detail pictures. And then, we did the flags on Main Street on there, too, so I took this picture that we had on the map. The lights, I took a picture of the light posts and some things like that.
I have a question. Do you retail to all the businesses? Do you try to...
On Main Street?
Uh, any business?
Um, right now, I've been taking, like, the flyers especially. I go to all the businesses, I go to each building, and I make sure that they know what's going on. We're trying to get them involved, and a lot of people are now reaching out. At first, it was kind of putting it on the back burner, but now a lot of people are getting more interested. And I haven't really just focused on Main Street, I also go to the outskirts of town, because I want everybody to get involved, not just Main Street, it's only these blocks, and I want Pierceville to get involved. And another thing is, we had said First Friday was going to be on Main Street, but we never said that businesses couldn't bring a table and be there also. So the business can still be there if it's at a different business. So that's what a lot of different people are trying to do now, is go bring a table and pass out cards, pass out a cookie, and inside a cookie bag, give your card, I mean, promote your business, that's what we're trying to do, we're trying to promote local businesses. It doesn't have to be just because we're at one location, it's just about them, it's the whole community trying to help you out.
Well done.
For season.
So if you go to criteria five, and that's where you have to break it down, and show your monthly regular, your regular meetings. So what they really want us to do is for each approach, they want us to have a board meeting for that, so promotion, organization, they want, they want us to have about five meetings per month. So, so far, we're able to break it down to two. So we have our, our monthly board meeting, and then we have a meeting that we focus on, trying to find our first Fridays, trying to get more volunteers and get the board involved. So here, you have to show proof of your attendance, and then your minutes. So I was out of the minutes. And then, okay. Criteria, then they also wanted to, you need to put advisory board, look through the members' bar, the chair, and Clio got on there, so that paper's on there, too, on page forty. One thing that they did want is, to show is an example of a project that was largely volunteer-driven. So I took on the, the Main Street cleanup that we did on April twenty eighth. We had a total of one hundred and seventy-two volunteer hours for that one event, so I put that on there, that was our biggest strong one then. Now we have a couple more that are pretty big, too, but that was one of the big ones that we had, some volunteers. Then we had criteria six is the budget, so we have to put our budget in there and make sure that they can, we did have the funds for everything we're trying to do for that Criteria seven is about the manager, so I've been here for a total of ten months, going on eleven now, and then I have to put my resume in there, and what they really wanted off of that was just to see what you've learned from being a manager. So I put my information in there. Criteria eight is you are required to go to two professional trainings. This year, I had to go to three, being that I was a new manager, I had to go to that training also. So you have to label which ones you went to, so I went to the Amarillo, Corpus Christi, and, and also went to the Fort Worth, so that was, you're allowed to count that on here, so that's one good thing for that. I've also taken some volunteers to U Valley, they had a class there. Anytime you take your volunteers, you get credit for that, so, uh, your board members, so if, if we could go to something close and being at U Valley and Katsulah, I mean, to be closest to us, I'm trying to get as involved as we can with them, being that they've been in the program for so long, too, learn off of them, and see what they, what they recommend to us. Criteria nine is saying that we did our monthly reports and our reinvestment reports, I have turned all of those in on time, actually doing them before, because I didn't run them off, so, so we gotta, we gotta give them that. And then, criteria ten is saying it requires a national Main Street program, wants our membership number and what they need to charge.
Any questions on the report? One of the things that wasn't included in that report that, that she gave in her report today, and I want to make sure I mention tonight, because I'll forget it by next month. She intended to add a report of the volunteer hours.
The reinvestment.
Reinvestment, that's a non-reinvestment report, we had over two thousand volunteer hours in the Main Street program.
Awesome.
So we're not, you know, I mean, obviously, we've got a lot of people participating, a lot of people doing stuff, and it's, it's, it's picking up the horn now, so I mean, it's the, obviously, the cities, the people here have done, and to it are, are a big part of it as well. Okay, number five, Christmas lights on Main Street. As everyone saw, we had additional thirty-one Christmas tree lights on Main Street this year, part of our community Christmas decorations. Those were made possible because we worked with the E P, we needed that for Christmas last year, to get the drops in place on the poles, so we would have power for the plants. We'll once again work with the E P this year to get additional drops on the Wall Street, because we were suffering what we had there, and extending our drops on, we're, we're going to do the new annex areas and along South Oak and City. So I've had a lot of questions from people about why we didn't continue on Downwood Street, but we got a little bit this time. Last year, that part wasn't added, so we did ask them to continue on that way. So this year, we'll get specialists put out in the, in the annex area, so we can continue farther that way. We'll get the rest of the stuff done on South Oak, and then we'll work on adding some more in on, on the Wall Street as well. So next year, hopefully, Wall Street will look like old street, but this year, we'll be able to send that out a little bit farther, get some more drops in there, take the E P along with them. The twenty eighteen toy giveaway, the toy giveaway was a huge success, as everybody saw. We had a number of local businesses assist with the purchase of the toys again this year, with ACI, of course, leading the way with their five thousand dollar donation. So we'll maintain that, and we'll participate in that. The twenty eighteen city downtown Texas Christmas event, our downtown Texas Christmas event was a huge success as well. While we did not have a moisture this year, that has plagued us for the last two years, we did have to deal with some pretty cold temperatures and some def, definitely some high winds up Friday. The event was well-attended, and regardless, it was a really huge success. Students and astronauts, state staff have been working with the Air Force junior R P C group on an application, they have filed to have an opportunity to have amateur radio communication with the International Space Station. There's a lot of new parts in this proposal, our group approved students of Pierceville Schools to have a possible forty-five minute window to communicate with the International Space Station on dates selected by them, with all students being able to... Uh, there's a law to be parsed, this proposal, how it's approved, students of Pierce Hall Schools, that would cost a forty-five minute window to communicate with the International Space Station on dates selected by us, with all students being able to attend and listen to this event. Uh, so we'll continue working with the Junior R O P C, hopefully they'll be, uh, hopefully they'll be selected for this opportunity. So this is, we're gonna work with them on this, I think about October. Um, their application was submitted, um, the group that they work, whoever they work with, the NASA or whoever that does this, came back with some additional information, went to the area yesterday, and we got the initial information, so hopefully they get selected for this. Uh, get a chance to, to pass communications back and forth between the space stations that flies over and the kids at the school, and they're, they're proud of the entire school and how this school participates in this. Uh, the Old Street Revival is a hard-hitting area. As you all remember, November, we were forced to make an emergency repair to a water line on South Oak Street due to an A T and T contractor damaging our main water line underneath the street. So we're gonna text out the reimbursals, repairs, we'll keep you posted on how that process goes. And finally, the January Region Eight T C M A B, the city of Pierce Hall, will be hosting the January monthly meeting of the Region Eight Texas City Manager Association affiliate. Meeting will be held on January eighteenth, beginning at eleven thirty A M at our civic center. Ben Sandlin is the executive director of the Texas Municipal League, will be the presenter. Uh, he'll be providing the regional legislative update as we start the legislative season, season session. If any council members would like to attend, unless it's what he has to say, you're more than welcome to come. I will need to know if you're planning to attend ASAP, also we can ask you to answer. So this is the first time we're gonna be able to get some information to come down. For our meetings, this ought to be pretty well attended by everybody around here. Uh, we'll have to, I actually extended it to be two months ago, to the San Marcos, so this is, this part of the bill is the only regional meeting you can attend. I think I have all the next one set here, but that's all I have.
I had a question on the, on the park, the fencing, did, did you get bids on that?
Sure did.
For the, for the...
Sure did. Yeah, we fixed it, we checked a little bit.
Um, Madam Mayor, I had one question. When are we gonna break around on the annex order?
Well, um, you know, we have, we, I have a final, based on what you guys told them, we have a, a modified set of plans to look at. Um, kind of waiting on that until we see what our total costs are gonna be over there at the, at the park. You know, we added a few things over there that actually cost a little bit more than what we anticipated we were gonna do to begin with, so we're kind of, I think maybe to see what our final costs are, so we know exactly what we have to, to build over here before we set something to stall over there and get ourselves a little work started.
So are we, so it'll be post or after, uh, spring break?
Yeah, by, by that time, we'll definitely go, before we're out.
Okay.
We'll definitely, we're still trying to find, uh, we're still working with some of the companies, we're trying to find the bathrooms, uh, figure out what to do with the bathrooms, because we talked about putting new bathrooms in there. Uh, there are some people that make some pre-made, uh, you basically walk in and sell them down, um, their concrete, um, pre-made concrete. Um, we're in, we're, we're trying to get some quotes on some of those, figure out how they're gonna fit in over there. Um, still trying to figure out the total cost and what the lighting's gonna be as well. Um, so once we get final numbers, uh, you know, once we get a chance to get the bids out, I'll just get the final numbers out, I'll definitely know what we have left to do over here.
And those, those bathrooms will hook up to the sewer lines?
Yes. The existing bathrooms we have over there, we're talking about doing a bid, because it, we're talking about doing a bid is just putting bars, all those windows and doors are making out of stores, so they can keep them over, over there and keep, let them to keep over.
I had a question. So what are we doing with the old nursing home?
Uh, right now, we just got through renov, or not renovating, fixing four rooms in there that we could use for storage, um, to be against somebody to use the storage up there. Um, then we got those fixed this week, I think, and so all the Christmas stuff we're gonna store up there. Uh, and we're gonna start working, as we have people that can go up there and, and secure those rooms and make sure that we can put stuff in there, not having problems with it, we're starting to secure, secure stuff up there, put stuff up there.
So are you gonna move, um, that?
Move the yard after?
Yeah, the yard. Were we gonna do that after all?
Well, I mean, it's something we can look at, um, it's probably gonna cost some money to do it. You know, we, we talked to, one thing we talked about is I talked to staff about that, and we've got some other, some other issues, we, we got storage tanks at the existing yard, and if we, you know, we'd have to talk about how we're gonna keep those storage tanks secure if we don't have, if we don't have staff and equipment over there. Well, that's where our gas is at.
Oh.
You know, we have to get rid of little gas tanks, that's gonna cost a bunch of money, get rid of the gas tanks to move. There's a bunch of other pieces to that puzzle, uh, that we're gonna have to figure out. There is two wings up there that could, there's a wing up there that could be used as offices for that staff to, to put stuff up there. Um, but we don't have, you know, we don't have the kind of outdoor storage up there that we have over here, the shit, the shays and the shelters and the, the kind of stuff that we have there, so we have to do some extra work there. Um, right now, I'm just trying to, trying to focus on getting part of it where we can use it, you know, where we have it secured, we can start storing stuff up there. Without having to, anything we need to do to work on that ability to secure, you know, to make sure that everything locks right and everything's good and cover the windows and, and people can't break in and, you know, without having somebody up there twenty-four hours a day, it's a target immediately. As soon as we bought it, I broke into it.
Oh, really?
Uh, they cut the fence and broke into it as soon as we bought it. Um, and, well, I don't wanna get into the fact that there was a law enforcement person here that saw the kids walking down the street with some bolt cutters and the, the wire cutters about to walk off, uh, walking right down the street in front of the pole fence. Uh, but we finally got that resolved. Um, so we're doing some extra, extra measures on parts up, um, putting bars on the outside windows so they can't break in or steal anything. Uh, reinforcing the doors and locks on the inside, so we can start using it for storage and start beginning to transfer our storage up there. I don't wanna spend a bunch of money doing that, I'd rather have staff do it. Um, so we're saving that money to do the other things that the council wants to do.
A question. Where are we with, uh, hiring, uh, company or somebody come help us fix the potholes?
Um, so the, the hiring of the three, um, the three positions were approved and, 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 and putting out a proposal to get some companies to look at, to bring them in. Uh, we're working on all of those right now, kind of been holding back a little bit until we see what happens next week. Um, because we know that we have the potential next week to have, uh, some other financial issues. So, kind of wait till next Wednesday's over to put all that stuff out, just in case. Well, it's a lot to go with.
Remember that, I got you.
Turn on the questions, because it's kind of gonna stick to the...
You, you saw those wheels turn, it might...
Yeah, there was a little smoke when they were out there.
Okay. Anything else on the manager's report? Sir?
Hold up.
Okay. Review of bills? General announcements? City Council inquiries for general announcements?
I have one, um, the monument, uh, for the, for that past pack at the Virginia Park for that, um, D C's. Um, I spoke to the parents about it, and they said they had gotten a price on it, and, uh...
Do you wanna put it on the agenda?
Yeah, can we put it on the agenda, and I'll forward you the, the, what they sent, what they emailed me on that.
Yeah, you, you have, if there's children that agree, we'll put on the agenda, I talked to them as well, so, yeah, if there's children we'll talk about. Everybody know what she's talking about?
Oh, oh, yeah. I was like, what? You, I can do it. Okay.
What, what's his name?
I know his last name was Dennis Leal. Is that what his name was?
Yeah.
Huh?
Is that his home?
Yeah.
Dennis Leal.
All righty. You should for agenda.
Ready for another? Street maintenance plan, you know, we've talked about things, but I don't know where we're at with it. And I guess, so we can find, figure out how to...
Get on target.
Get on, back on target with some of that, and the pothole patcher and so forth.
Worse than what they are.
I know I'm getting a lot of feedback right now, but, you know, the rains have come and all that, and so it's, it's kind of hard. Keep telling people, we got sixty-five miles of streets, I mean, it's kind of hard to keep those a lot of stuff, but...
It's just bad.
So, some of the streets are getting moved, uh...
A little.
But does anybody else wanna see that?
Yeah.
How about the city officers? Did you get to hire someone?
He's got one in process right now that's a vacant position, but the three that were approved by the council and the bringing in a contractor, I've had a hell of a lot to see what happens on those, just to make sure, because I'll get us to the market.
Any more agenda items? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.